I'll make it live just a sec. We are unmuted. We can stay on our... Do you have a plate?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
John Rovetton.
Here.
Moto Johnson.
Here.
Nikki Pettit.
Here.
Joe Robinson.
Here.
Tyler Wilson.
That was a no. You got that right. He didn't say anything. We have a motion session for the purpose of filling a public office in personnel.
I have a second.
Well, someone has to make a motion.
I have a motion.
I have a second.
Motion both.
John Rovetton.
Aye.
Moto Johnson.
Aye.
Nikki Pettit.
Aye.
Joe Robinson.
Aye.
Oh, God have mercy.
It's unmuted.
Okay. How can I?
Oh my goodness.
Brilliant.
Come on, coach. Come on, coach. Alright, so. You got this. I have to do attendance first. And then. I've never had to drive this like anyone does. We will reconvene here in just a moment. I need to take attendance again because we have a new board member. So John Brotherton present. Moto Johnson present. Nikki Pettit present. Joe Robinson present and Tyler Wilson.
Present.
Alright, actually Nikki's not here.
She went to the bathroom.
Okay, so she's present for the meeting. Alright, now is there a motion to reconvene open session?
I'll make the motion.
I second the motion.
Who made the motion?
I did.
You're here, you can do this. Alright.
I'm sort of watching.
I didn't want to cause any trouble.
But I thought you were leaving. You did alright? Okay. Oh my goodness. I am going to get out of leading the meeting. And you can tape it over now, man.
Please.
I'll talk to you later.
Alright, I'm sorry, I don't know where we are.
We should be on.
Reconvene in open session, we've already done that.
Yep. We didn't vote.
Let us go along.
Oh my gosh, this I should not be in charge. Alright.
Alright, was there a motion made to reconvene?
Joe and Joe.
And. Alright, I'm so sorry.
So.
We're gonna have to take the attendance again.
You can just click it.
All attendance. John Brotherton.
Here.
Moto Johnson.
Here.
Nikki Pettit.
Here.
Joe Robinson.
Here.
Tyler Wilson.
Here.
I have to go to rest.
Alright, now we're.
Okay, sign. Alright, now we're.
Here she is.
Number five.
I'm not leading.
I'm leading.
I'm on follow. Oh, so we need to do the. We motioned to reconvene open session. Is there a motion to approve the agenda removing and correcting items as presented?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda removing and correcting items as presented.
I second it.
I second it.
John Brotherton.
Aye.
Moto Johnson.
Aye.
Nikki Pettit.
Aye.
Joe Robinson.
Aye.
Tyler Wilson.
Aye.
Public comments. Before we get to the public, public comments, I'm gonna, we have a, I have a statement from Andy Graham to read. To the community of Rantool. Effective immediately, I am resigning my position as a member of Rantool City School Board. I have enjoyed my time on this board, and I think we have done a lot of good things for the kids in our community. Being an elected official is becoming more and more difficult in this community. My hope is that the individuals who are continually criticizing elected officials would step up and try it at some point. Rantool is a great place to live and a great place to have your family grow up. Over the last few years, I have watched a staff in this district work extremely hard trying to educate our kids during a pandemic. The work that has been done has been a miracle in many ways. Our staff here at RCS is always trying to do what's best for the kids, and I think, I thank all of them for that. While I will miss working with everyone trying to accomplish great things for our kids, I won't be far. I will still be very active in this community, and I will still continue to work with kids and families that need help. Thank you to everyone who voted for me and to everyone that has offered words of encouragement along the way. I will now be on the sidelines rooting for all of you, because if you guys are successful, then the kids will be successful. Then you need to go to the secretary. There was some public comment, right?
Yeah.
All the time.
We have, we have a square listed. It's first.
Good evening, everyone. Most of you know who I am. For those who don't, I'm Deborah Swett. I'm, I've been a community member in Rantool, a resident, for over 50 years. My goal is to seek the truth, accountability, and transparency for all residents in our town. That's why I speak up at board meetings, school board, village board meetings, to try to seek out the truth and transparency for our government. I strongly believe in our community. And a way to be involved and to exercise our values is being a good corporate citizen. And being a good corporate citizen is to demonstrate the values. And I am, and I will say, I'm aware of Mr. Graham's resignation from the board. I have been in discussion with him for weeks and asking him to do it, to resign, to benefit our school board, our community, and our youth. There have been some problems, the community, parents, and our youth. We have not been satisfied with the status of the schools this year or the performance of the school board. And so because of that and his leadership, I asked him to resign. And he did. He complied because he wants the best for the community. And I hope, and he wants to, at least he said, continue to work with me and others in the community who have asked of this. Now, it was nothing per se that Mr. Graham did. If you guys are not aware, there is an index of compatibility by the state's attorney general's office that's put out annually. Mr. Graham was wearing three hats. He was an elected official, school board, rental township treasurer, or excuse me, supervisor. He is also in the leadership as a village employee. The township supervisor and the school board have been deemed incompatible by the attorney general's office. There is a conflict of interest there, coupled by his being a municipal employee. That's a total conflict of interest. I brought this to his attention. He was aware of it when he ran. And I told him it was wrong and that he needed to step aside. I respect him for doing it, but we can't have those conflict of interests when people holding multiple positions and they overlap, and there is a potential conflict of interest. So, as I said, he did comply and resign. And I think he and we and the community, the small group of us that came together on this, and we hope to work with the school board, the new members who will be seated and hopefully will be seated in the near, very near future, and those who will be elected next spring to help move rental city schools forward and invoke the change that we had hoped would be demonstrated this school year. Thank you.
I agree.
Thank you.
Next, we have Wendell Goldstein.
I'm Wendell Goldstein. Good evening, everyone. I want to talk to you all about the process of interviewing the new candidates for the school board. We have to have the expectations as transparent as possible, as transparent as they can be. Getting someone new to the board. We need to make sure that those questions that are asked of them, those questions are truthful. Concur with Ms. Swett saying, we go back to the vote on the tax increase. Even though Mr. Graham was aware of what had transpired with his holding three different positions, he did not vote on the tax increase, which made him even more aware of what was going on. That's what really sent a flag up for me. You didn't vote on it, so you are aware of what's going on. All we want is transparency with the board. That's all we want. We want transparency. I don't use the word kid because that refers to me as a girl. I use children. I want the best for these children here. I brought two children to this school system. Two. I want us to best every child that enrolls in RCS 137 and RTHS 193 are geniuses when they come in. These children are geniuses. They know more at their age coming in than we did coming in in first, second, third grade. So we want to continue to push that into these children so that our community can grow farther than alcohol and drugs. I think our children deserve the very best of everything that we can give them, starting with the board. Yours responsibility is making sure that everything stays above board. We don't want anything hidden. If it's being hidden, we are asking you to stop the hiding. And let's stop discussing everything concerning these children and these children's parents on Facebook. That's not the platform for that. Facebook is great, but Facebook can lead us into some problems. We don't want anyone throwing rocks at any board member through Facebook. We don't want anyone to throw rocks at any superintendent or administrators. We just don't want that. Let's use Facebook for what it's meant for and stop using Facebook to fight battles, because that's not where you fight battles. In business, big men, and you are the business leaders, because we latitude as officials. So we want you to conduct the business of this community, of this district, conducted in a civil manner. Please, I'm begging you, I'm asking you, please do not fight the battles of the board and the district on social media. If you have a question, ask that person if that can be a meeting with that person and a board member. Not just one person trying to meet with that person, so there's accountability there. So you will know that that's lie, that lie will not go anywhere. What we don't want is any myths in our understanding, any fraud. No misunderstandings. We want straight information, especially to these parents. Superintendent Woods know how I feel about this. I don't care how well you know a parent. When that parent is a parent, is Mr. and Mrs., and let's get off this first-name basis, because when you say it to them on a first-name basis, especially in front of other children, that teaches that child to disrespect this adult. And that causes conflict between the children now, because you call my mom by her first name, you call my dad by his first name. So we want total transparency, and we want the respect of these children 100%. And it goes for each and every one of us. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all we have for comments. We're on to the consent agenda, and I'm gonna, there were a couple things I wanted to do a shout out since Mr. Robertson's in the room right now. He, I'm not sure all the board knows, but he made a very nice donation to JW Ader that enabled a lot of kids to go to the event at the REC Center, the youth center. Two, about a month ago now, wasn't it? But Mr. Goldstein, or Mr. Robertson was there, and Ms. Swett was with him and got to hang out with the kids, and it was a very large donation. So I, I know that it was a great turnout that night, and it helped that they had a generous donor. Also in our consent agenda tonight, along with our typical things, are some annual things that we do. One is the extension of a three-year contract with Ushu HR. And just so you know who they are, they're a consulting HR company that I work with. Meet with them weekly, or not weekly, meet with them monthly. They help make sure we're complying with all the regulations on personnel. Part of why we have to have this is we don't have a large HR department. We have one person in HR. So that's why we work with the consultant. The annual approval of consolidated district plan, this shows how we use all the different federal and state grants, and it's the, how they're coordinated. And this was a shift that happened probably four years ago now, when the state went to a different funding model called evidence-based funding. So we have to show how Title I, which is for low-income students, and Title III, which is for bilingual students, and Title IV, which is for basically extracurriculars and safety, how those are being coordinated. So that's what that plan is. The other is our annual extension of our transportation contract. First student was here, they left. They were here to meet you. They have a new, Mark, our local director, is still the same guy, but he has a new boss. And they were just gonna shake hands and meet you, but they did have to get going. So those are the things on the consent agenda. Just so board and the public know, because I had to learn this this year. The transportation contract is one that, when we first bid it out, when we first went to private transportation, it would have been a multi-year contract and through a competitive bid process. Now, we're at a point in the school code allows this, that until another transportation vendor expresses interest, we can continue to extend the contract with first student. And while there's only two companies that do school transportation in this area, and the other company has not made any effort to get our contract. So if they were to ever contact us, we would go back to a competitive bid and give them an opportunity to bid on it. But I think it was a 3% increase, which frankly, I was shocked with that, given the, especially just fuel costs. They have significantly increased their labor costs this year with having to get to some competitive pay rates. So that is it on the consent agenda. So we would need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make the motion.
I second their motion.
John Brotherton.
Aye.
Moto Johnson.
Aye.
Nikki Pettit.
Aye.
Joe Robinson.
Aye.
Tyler Wilson.
Aye.
Okay. Are we ready to go to nine?
Yes.
You have to click through it. Okay. So this one's not in the consent agenda because it's new. And that is a memorandum of understanding with Illinois Tutoring Initiative, which is a, a great opportunity for us. Let me click on it so I can see my notes. So Illinois State University received a large grant that will go through the fall of 2024, and they have asked to partner with us. ISU pays and recruits the tutors. They handle the onboarding of the tutors, which would be fingerprinting and background checks. The tutoring that they do will be done in RCS school. I talked for five minutes. All right, let me turn that off. Maybe I should stop. Yeah, I know, you all really want me to. Thank you, Mr. Brotherton. So the tutoring is done in our schools and based on our schedule, so it, it's, there's really no risk, or it doesn't cost us anything. The one thing I want the board to be aware of, and this is fairly typical, is the MOU that we're in doing includes us being able to share data of students. Typically, that is non-identifiable data that is used for research.
Danger.
Is there any discussion on that? Okay. Sorry. And no discussion, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Item as presented, Mr. Brotherton made the motion.
I'll second.
John Brotherton.
Aye.
Moto Johnson.
Aye.
Nikki Pettit.
Aye.
Joe Robinson.
Aye.
Tyler Wilson.
Aye.
All right, item number 10. I know the teachers at Eastland that are in the room right now are, could not be more excited about this. So we did talk to the board, we, we get a school maintenance grant from the state. It's typically, it's $50,000 a year, but we have to match the funds. So our plan was to do 50,000. We're putting that towards doors, that's in our, kind of our maintenance plan. The last school to get doors was Ader, and it was the front hall there. This bid came in great for us. It's 24 new classroom doors, which should be all the classrooms. And it came in at $112,000. And that was, the second bid came in at 113, but we had three bidders, and that project should get started this summer. And so everyone knows, that's been an ongoing plan in our district, is to replace classroom doors. A lot of our classroom doors really are beyond repair. There's just a lot of wear and tear that happens on those doors. And they're expensive to do, because you, it involves cutting into masonry typically. But what was the company that got the bid was?
Barber and the Atlas.
Yeah, Barber and the Atlas. Any discussion on that?
Just a, they're taking the frame, the whole new frame in there, right?
That is how I understand it.
Because when I first saw that, I thought, wait a minute, they're gonna be taking the whole frame, so.
Yeah, it should be the frame, and I, I believe it's similar to what we did at Ader.
Yeah.
And it's the better hinge, that's the whole length of the door. Not likely to get your fingers pinched in there.
What's the timeframe on that?
I don't know.
I mean, because haven't, isn't there work that needed to be done with the awnings that?
That hasn't.
I've never seen nothing.
It hasn't started yet, you are correct.
I mean, you know, we're sitting there pumping out this money.
Well, we don't pay anything until they do it.
Okay.
Just so, yeah.
I'm just, I was just wondering, we're sitting there saying we're gonna do this, that, and the other, and then never, never.
So we approve, this is approving. So we approve, this is approving the expenditure. And then, yeah, we don't pay it until it's done. I don't wanna say it's, but it's 100% done because some of them, their contracts where they get, like, we might have to purchase the doors upfront, but we don't pay for the labor and install until after. And I don't have those details. But yeah, we didn't pay for those awnings yet. I will tell you that. So, and it's a different company and some of these smaller projects, like the parking lot that we approved at the last meeting, that might be started as early as next month. They wanted to, they asked if they could start it before the school year ended. So it's just different contractors and materials, I think. Is there a motion to approve the bid as presented?
I'll make the motion to approve it as.
Second. John Brotherton?
I've got a second yet.
Oh, Nikki did.
I seconded.
Oh, Nikki, I'm sorry, I didn't hear your name. It's ridiculous, I think.
Um, John Brotherton?
Aye.
Moto Johnson?
Aye.
Nikki Pettit?
Aye.
Joe Robinson?
Aye.
Tyler Wilson?
Aye.
Because there was one more thing I wanted to say about the doors. It doesn't include the gym doors. So I didn't say it's just classroom and the gym doors is what really got this whole thing started. So I was like, why aren't they, the gym doors are significantly more expensive because they're double doors. They come out a lot more expensive. So we are gonna go ahead and still get bids on those. Likely budgeting that, depending on how the bids come in on that, budgeting in or next, into the next this year's budget. The gym doors don't shut and we've got them locking again at least, but we're talking about interior doors too. Next item is the board calendar, which I'm sure you all have studied. Any questions on it? So we're leaving it as, so you did, you might not remember, but last April, you all voted on this year's calendar. It was one of the first votes you took. So 2022 is, we're sticking to the third Thursday of the month. Starting at six o'clock is our general calendar. It's so small here, July, November, and March, it will not be the third Thursday of the month. And that has to do with other calendar conflicts. But we know those a year in advance. All right, any discussion on that? And keep in mind, board, we can change the calendar really at any time. And we can add meetings, we can do that. But having a good set schedule is, is a, is a very typical thing.
I'll make the motion to approve the recommended school board meeting calendar.
I second it.
John Brotherton?
Aye.
Moto Johnson?
Aye.
Nikki Pettit?
Aye.
Joe Robinson?
Aye.
Tyler Wilson?
Aye.
All right, our last action item is the reorganization of CARE and the, which is also gonna allow us to have some discussion about elementary behavior and discipline. So I'll start with what you're being asked to approve tonight. And then that, I'm gonna go wherever the conversation takes us. So CARE, which stands for Child Alternative Restorative Experience, was something that we started, I believe it was fall of 2018. The program is, when it was initially designed, was a short-term alternative to suspension for students in grades one through five. So we have been doing that all, since we started the program. In year one, the program was at Ader for elementary kids. And then the last two years, it has been at Broad Meadow. We've been following the same rules of CARE that we had at the time. So students are, in, in general, not there for more than three visits. They're not supposed to be there for more than a certain number of days. I think it's nine would be the max. I might be wrong on 10, might be 10. But the staff that are involved in that program track it. It's one classroom teacher and one teaching assistant. And the whole point of it is if a child is suspended from school, we want to give that child an opportunity to not actually have to be at home. Oftentimes, especially elementary kids are alone. And they do a social-emotional curriculum with the kids when they're there. So today, they had five boys. I mean, I know this. And some days, they have no kids. And, but, so they had a pretty good group, a pretty large group today. So what we're looking to add in kind of reviewing feedback from our teachers especially, and looking at the needs that we've had this year, is there's a need in our schools for a longer-term placement for greater than three days. We have done it on, very few exceptions, we have done that. So I know we had one child this year who we had for two weeks. And then he had a transition week to go back to his regular school. We would like to increase the staff so that we have two classrooms. And we, we have a lot of the details to hash out once we know if the additional staffing is approved. Okay? So what we're aiming at in general though is being able to provide up to a six-week placement for an elementary child based on the needs of the child. So we would be looking at each kid individually having an, an option for a six-week placement that we, we want to be very careful that it's not a permanent placement. I've been very open about that with my staff that, for instance, at JW Ader, Bulldog Academy, when I got there, we had eighth graders who had been in that program for three years. All right? The, what we want to have is an alternative placement for a student, giving some time to work with that student with the goal of re-entering that student back into their regular classroom. So we're not going to do a full year of placement. I know of specifically one child this year that if this had been an option, this child would probably be in school right now. Unfortunately, we didn't have a good placement for the child and the parent withdrew the child. So we, we just, we don't have an option to do this with our elementary kids. So we need to create, eventually create the rules and parameters on what qualifies a student to go in, what we're going to do for transitions to re-enter the student. The one boy we had recently is kind, is probably a good model for it where two weeks in the program and then there was a week where half-days at the neighborhood school, half-days with CARE. The teacher from CARE and the TA were able to go into his classroom with him and help him transition back in. So really, we're looking at another layer of intervention. We could end up with, so what we have to determine still with the two classrooms is we could have one classroom be a short-term placement, like we're currently doing, and one classroom be a long-term placement. But what we, we have to sort through is can we, would it make more sense to have an early elementary classroom and an upper elementary classroom? So that you can have not just SEL instruction, social-emotional learning instruction, but also doing the content work that needs to be done. So we're gonna, once we have the staff in place, we're gonna really work out. It's, it's gonna be hopefully flexible. It might change as we get into it and see what's working and what's not working. But, you know, right now, you know, are really our only option for some of our more serious elementary behaviors, it's suspension and getting into long-term suspensions. And we don't want to have to do that with elementary school children. We don't want to with any child, I'm clear about that. But at the junior high level, we already have Bulldog Academy in place. It is not currently staffed, so we don't have students in it like we used to. We have a couple of kids in there right now with staff, but it's, it's not staff like it would normally be. We also are able to place kids at Ready in Champaign as an alternative school in a normal year. This year, Champaign or Ready is not taking any junior high kids this year. So, and the board knows this, that we've ended up having to expel some kids without an alternative. So we need to have these alternatives in place with, so that we can provide more intervention time for the kids. When you, if you talk to our principals, as we've been talking about this, they know that sometimes you need to, you know, a very small number of kids in an elementary school can become quite a challenge for the whole building. And we aren't, it, it's not realistic for us to expel, you know, eight-year-olds. Okay? We can, but it's just, it's not realistic. I don't think if I start bringing eight-year-olds to you for expulsions that, well, one, you'll probably judge me on that, but I don't think you're gonna want to do it. But we do know that we have got to be able to move some kids out. Not a large number of kids. Okay, this is, we're not talking about big numbers. It's, like I said, five at CARE this, yes, today was a big number for them. They don't usually have more than that. So we're, that's where we are with that. So, okay, discussion, what other things do we want to talk about? Or about this, obviously?
Where would these rooms be? Which schools, which?
So well, we're, at this point, we're keeping it at Broad Meadow. It'd be two classrooms at Broad Meadow. So you'd have three staff to run two physical classrooms. Broad Meadow has the space.
So will you be moving kids from different schools to that?
Yes. So if they, which we do right now for CARE. They're bust. Sometimes parents just bring them anyway. But we would have to provide transportation to the elementary kids who, that's not their homeschool.
Who makes the decision if they can go into this program or not?
So those are some of the rules we're gonna have to determine. But it's ultimately, it's gonna be the building administrator who makes the recommendation. So a teacher can't just say, I want this kid out for six weeks.
Yeah.
And, and, right? And what we've been doing this year, I know for, what we did specifically for the one longer-term one, we, we tried, actually, we've had two students that went longer-term is, you know, I was actually involved in those decisions with the, with the staff doing that. But it's like, li- likely that, right now, Kelly Crawford, who's, what's her official title? Assistant Director of SPED, not actually.
Special Ed Administrator.
Special Ed Administrator. She oversees the program right now, so any placements there have to go through her. So we will have those things, right? Because I don't want it to just be somebody's angry at a kid and they can send them out for six weeks.
So when they're in this program, does their instruction continue? Is that set up to?
So that's what we want to do if we go to the longer-term placements. They do have to continue with instruction. When they go for one to three days, they're generally not doing regular school instruction. But yes, on a long, the two, the two kids we've had there for longer-term, excuse me, this year, they, their teacher's sending work for them to do and they have enough time with them to, to do the work.
In the past, you've mentioned about a so-called overcrowding problem. And now you're talking about getting rid of two classrooms.
Well, I've stopped calling it overcrowding. Thank you. All right. The, no, Broad Meadow has space. So earlier in there, we were talking about that, those issues. Broad Meadow is the one school that has rooms. So they can take one more. Now, if their enrollment were to go up, we'd have to reconsider that. But Pleasant Acres and East Lawn definitely would not have rooms next year for it. I don't know about Northview, but I don't think Northview does either. But I did actually ask the Broad Meadow, like, do you have a room for this? I knew the answer already, but I did ask. They've been using one classroom this year for lunch, for instance. Anything else you want to talk about? Now, I got, I want to ask board, I shared with you this month. I, I hadn't been dropping it into your packets because I didn't think to do it, frankly. But I know the previous superintendent provided the monthly suspension report for you. Is that something you would like me to start including in the packet? Or, or is it something you're not gonna really look at? I sent it this month knowing we were gonna have this present, this information. I can do, I get the report every month, I just haven't been putting it in your packet. So it's not, it's not hard for me to do it.
I personally look at it.
Okay. Right, and the only thing we have to do on that one is it does have identifying student information. I know I shared that in my email, so definitely cannot share that with anyone. It's also information, for instance, if it was FOIA, it would have to be heavily redacted, if not entirely redacted. But I know I shared it with you because I wanted you to see some examples of the behaviors that are rising to the level of suspension from school. And to get an idea of some of the things that students are doing, as well as what our staff is addressing.
Well, I think, I think it's a good idea anyway, so that all the board members see it and be able to understand what these teachers and administrators in all the schools are going through. I mean, we can hear things all day long.
Yep.
Like Mr. Goldstein said, seeing it on Facebook rather than getting the transparency of seeing it up front and the actual numbers of the kids that are, that are having these different, different behavior problems and or whatever problems that they're having. We can look at it and, and then we as a board need to come up also, not only you as superintendent and the administrators of the school, but to try to figure out a way where we can try to correct these problems before it keeps continuously go out of hand. Because I know that there's a lot of things, in my opinion, that are being overlooked. There's a lot of parents that are showing, showing their opinions either through social media and or just verbally. And they're being misunderstood because being a parent and the community having this many kids that are not being seen, just being told certain things, a parent's being blindsided. And I think at least if the board can at least see some of these things, we can reach out and, and try to correct some of these problems and or try to let the community know that we're trying to do the best that we can to correct these problems instead of letting them think that we're just overlooking them and bypassing everything that keeps happening.
Yeah, the other thing, as you were talking, it popped in my head is we've typically done an annual presentation on student discipline data. And I don't think it's happened for the past two years, which is a lot of it was due to COVID in there. Frankly, there was one year we didn't have much data, which was, was great. But we also didn't have a lot of kids in school. But, so that's something we can do in one of the summer months for sure, is get back into showing all of that discipline data for the district. We've been looking at it as a district admin, with the principals. It's something we've been looking at recently also. We do it regularly, but we specifically did it at a meeting a month ago. But yeah, historically, that information has been presented to the board. So it's, it's time to do it.
I agree with what you're saying. I think summertime is a, a better opportunity for the board and some of the administrators that's willing to, to give us their feedback, trying to correct these problems before school starts next year. Because, you know, they're, the teachers, administrators, you know, they're, they're, they don't know what's gonna come up. And they're the ones that have to deal with it. You know, not only do they have to deal with the children, they have to deal with the parents. Then they, you know, and it's, to me, that's, that's part of our, that's part of our job.
Any other discussion? Is that something other board members would like to see is the discipline presentation or? So I will go, I can, it's very easy for me to drop the, that report that I shared this month into the packet so it can be there monthly. And then I know, I guess, June or July, once we have the end of the year reports done, we can pull in that, the data for the whole district. So I'm asking for the board to approve adding a position. So I'm asking for the board to approve adding a position. Whenever it's a, we don't, I told you before, a lot of the positions we don't ask for approval on because they have to happen no matter what, based on class sizes and enrollment. So this is a brand-new added position, okay? And I also worded, worded it in here that it's possible we won't be able to find a teacher the way the hiring market is right now. And if I can't find a teacher, I'm gonna hire a TA and we're gonna work within that parameter, those parameters to, to get it done. So we'll see. I'm asking for the motion to approve adding one FTE, that's full-time equivalent, for a teacher or one FTE for a teaching assistant for CARE. The motion.
I make the motion. I say through one FTE.
You're good.
Okay.
Tyler seconded?
Yes. John Brotherton.
Aye.
Mordo Johnson.
Aye.
Nikki Pettit.
Aye.
Joe Robinson.
Aye.
Tyler Wilson.
Aye.
All right. Information items. We're on a streak. We had no FOIA requests this month. Some media info in there, Building and Grounds Committee minutes, tentative budget amendment. That would be, this is one I do need to make sure I speak on. Every year we do, just about, I think every year, frankly, we do have to do a budget amendment. Anytime one of our 10 funds is shifted by 10% or more, there has to be a budget amendment. So we are working on preparing the tentative budget amendment, which is the first step. It may be on the agenda next month. It might have to go till June with the transitions we're having in the business office right now, but eventually a budget amendment is a very formal thing with a hearing that will come in the summertime. So I just needed to make sure I let you know that we, we do have to do a budget amendment, which again is pretty typical. This year, we have received revenues. And the revenue is still coming in, a lot of it's related to COVID, has changed the budget just by receiving funds, so we have to formally approve that. Nothing to approve. Were we going to go into closed session again? I don't think we are.
No, I don't think we are.
Skip to 17. All right. All right, we are going to, all right, are you ready?
I guess I'm caught up on this question.
Are you on 17?
There we go.
We would like to, well, one of you probably should do this one.
Oh, we're gonna make the motion to appoint a new board member. That's gonna take the place of Mitch Wilson, Mix Wilson.
Okay, and who are, who is the board recommending or going to vote on? Katie Johnston. Katie Johnston. All right. So Katie, do you want to come up and you can have a seat?
Yeah.
Yes. So is there a motion to appoint Katie Johnston to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Mitch Wilson?
I'll make the motion.
I say.
Okay. John Brotherton.
Aye.
Mordo Johnson.
Aye.
Nikki Pettit.
Aye.
Joe Robinson.
Aye.
Tyler Wilson.
Aye.
All right. Now we have to administer the oath of office.
Okay.
Who's gonna read it? Where is it at?
I've got it right here.
You got it?
Yes.
Mr. Brotherton, you may do the honors.
Just a second.
I think we have to stand up.
Okay.
I think so.
It's just her, though.
Actually.
Okay.
I should stand next to her.
All right. It's a very long one.
Okay.
I'm gonna take a picture.
Yes, please do. Don't put me in, okay? I tend to break phones.
All right.
And you will say, aye.
Aye.
Your name.
Catherine Johnson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm, whichever you prefer, that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office, as a member of the Board of Education.
Sorry, the duties of the office, of director of the Board of Education.
Okay, it's close enough.
Okay.
Of Rancho City Schools.
Of Rancho City Schools.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability.
And the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability.
Okay, here's the long part. I further swear or affirm.
I further swear.
I shall respect taxpayer interest.
I shall respect taxpayer interest.
By serving as a faithful protector.
By serving as a faithful protector.
Of the school district's assets.
Of the school district's assets.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression.
Of opinion, by, opinions, I should really say, by my fellow board members.
Opinions by my fellow board members.
And others who seek a hearing.
And others who seek a hearing.
Before the board.
Before the board.
While respecting the privacy.
While respecting the privacy.
Of students and employees.
Of students and employees.
I shall recognize.
I shall recognize.
That a board member.
That a board member.
Has no.
Has no.
Legal authority.
Legal authority.
As an individual.
As an individual.
And that decisions.
And that decisions.
Can be made only.
Can be made only.
By a majority vote.
By a majority vote.
At a public board meeting.
Sorry, at a public board meeting.
Just reminding myself to talk about these things. I shall abide by majority decisions.
I shall abide by a majority decision.
Of board.
Of the board.
While retaining the right.
While retaining the right.
To seek changes.
To seek changes.
In such decisions.
In such decisions.
Through ethical.
Through ethical.
And constructive channels.
And constructive channels.
As part of the Board of Education.
As part of the Board of Education.
I shall accept the responsibility.
I shall accept the responsibility.
For my role.
For my role.
In the equitable.
In the equitable.
And the quality education.
And the quality education.
Of every student.
Of every student.
In the school district.
In the school district.
I shall foster.
I shall foster.
With the board.
With the board.
Extensive participation of the community.
Extensive participation of the community.
Formulate goals.
Formulate goals.
Define outcomes.
Define outcomes.
And set the course.
And set the course.
For Rancho City Schools.
For Rancho City Schools.
I shall assist.
I shall assist.
In establishing a structure.
In establishing a structure.
And an environment.
And an environment.
Designed to ensure.
Designed to ensure.
All students.
All students.
Have the opportunity.
Have the opportunity.
To attain their maximum potential.
To attain their maximum potential.
Through a sound.
Through a sound.
Organizational framework.
Organizational framework.
I shall strive.
I shall strive.
To ensure.
To ensure.
A continuous assessment.
A continuous assessment.
Of student achievement.
Of student achievement.
In all conditions.
In all conditions.
Affecting the education.
Affecting the education.
Of our children.
Of our children.
In compliance with state law.
In compliance with state law. That's great.
I shall serve.
I shall serve.
As educations.
As educations.
Key advocate.
Key advocate.
On behalf of students.
On behalf of students.
And our community schools.
And our community schools.
To advance.
To advance.
The vision for Rancho City Schools.
The vision for Rancho City Schools.
I shall strive.
I shall strive.
To work together.
To work together.
With the district superintendent.
With the district superintendent.
To lead the school district.
To lead the school district.
Toward filling.
Toward fulfilling.
The vision of the board.
The vision of the board.
That it, fostering excellence.
Fostering excellence.
For every student.
For every student.
In their areas of academic skills.
In their areas of academic skills.
Knowledge.
Knowledge.
Citizenship.
Citizenship.
And personal development.
And personal development.
You get to sit up here now technically and vote.
Yes.
But we don't have you in the system to record your vote yet.
Sit right here.
Okay.
Is there a motion to make a shorter oath? We will be, I'll give you a call and we'll start doing the stuff we gotta do to get you fully on board. Okay. Would you like to say anything?
Yes.
Yeah. Hi, thank you. I'm excited. I grew up and attended RCS, RTHS, and eventually went to the U of I. I'm excited to work with you all and really try to make, you know, continue with, continue with excellence and, you know, improve our weekends. I'm really excited. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just for the record, my mother-in-law was her fifth-grade teacher.
She was the best.
Okay. We didn't even know that. I can't remember how I didn't know that for one thing. Okay, board and superintendent comments section is, I'm just gonna share for the public that with an additional vacancy on the board, we will, I, I'll wait till I get some more direction from the board, but more than likely, we will be doing something similar to what we just did. And then for next month, we have informed the other three candidates that they just have to let us know if they want to be considered for the vacancies, the next vacancy, but from a public point of view, you can anticipate that there would be an appointment at the next board meeting also. Okay? And hopefully no other resignations. The other thing that will appear on the agenda next month, we anticipate, is reorganization of the board. By default, Joe is the president. Whenever those, the president can't be here. So the board may choose to do a reorganization at its next meeting. We couldn't do it tonight because it wasn't on the agenda. So, anything else anyone wants to say?
Yes, I'd like to first, congratulations. We had four great candidates that, you know, came in there, gave us their interviews. And glad to see that you, you were assigned to the board. The second thing, I wanted to make sure I, I wanted to thank everyone that's here and every, and Mrs. Swett, Mr. Ghosting, for coming out, being transparent. Not only that, having the heart and the guts to come up here and be as truthful as you possibly can and tell us as board members and administrators our faults and some of the things that we're not doing, because if we don't have community members like yourself, then we're gonna continue to fail and that means our children are gonna continue to fail. And if we accept that as a community, then we as board members continue to fail. I don't want to live like that, and I did not run to come up here and sit there and see not only my children, but all the children that go to the school in RCS, District 137, fail for no reason. These teachers come out here, they show that their support to come out here to these board meetings, and I'm, and I'm not discrediting the ones that don't come out. They know what it's like on the front line. They know how hard it is. And I want to let the teachers and the administrators that I feel deserve it understand that I will do everything that I can as a board member to back you and do the best I can to make things better for you, because the bottom line is, is to make things better. That's it. Better. We can't change everything overnight. And we dang sure can't change it if we sit there and fight amongst ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Katie's about to get to take her first vote. Yeah, she does. We just don't have a way to write it down. There are motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
That'll be faster than that.
Who's such a difference maker?
Nikki. Nikki did.
There's a public comment. Very smart. Nikki has something to say.
Oh.
Number 19.
No, there's, public comment is only as needed at the end.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Can I ask a question? As needed.
Is that just a side? He wants to, yeah.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Can we get the, the data concerning the attendance? Also concerning the discipline? Doesn't have to have the names of who's who, so that we'll know and we'll know what we're up against out in the public with how much is going on in the school district that we really don't know about, but we're hearing it approximately. So if we have it in writing.
Can I follow up with you about what that might look like?
You sure, man? I don't have a problem with that.
I've got your phone number now. I had your phone number.
Oh, that's fine.
I know.
Don't make it public. Come on right now.
No, that's a challenge.
Are you ready for the vote then?
Yes.
I have a, okay. John Brotherton.
Aye.
Mordo Johnson.
Aye.
Nikki Pettit.
Aye.
Joe Robinson.
Aye.
Tyler Wilson.
Aye.
Katie Johnston.
Aye.
All right.
First to adjourn.
I need to turn the camera off.
Yeah.
Could you, okay, thanks. Yeah, I'll, yeah, be in touch.